Getting one of those military camp outfits. Well, you can put it in. I can tell you it's a heater.
Yeah.
When you think of soldiers, zero to zero. We got a little socky.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular session of our February meeting to order. Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have a special recognition in terms of students, but I would like to go ahead and recognize, I was told that Leadership Newton participants are here with us this evening. So, the Leadership Newton participants, if you guys will please just kind of stand so we'll know who you are. Thank you for being here. All right, and tonight, just to brief you on, we did our work session last week, so it won't be as much dialogue tonight. So, this is our regular session where the items that we have already discussed, we'll still have discussion, but we might move a little quickly through them. So, I do not believe we have public participation. Okay, thank you. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Submit.
Second.
Okay. It's been moving properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
To move?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Bailey. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Superintendent's reports. Dr. Barr.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
As in addition to the superintendent's report, item D, we have a presentation this evening that will be led by Dr. Sheila Thomas, Chief Strategy and Communication Outreach Officer. And she will be now taking the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Madam Chair, Mrs. Henderson Baker, our board members, and Madam Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity this evening to share with you about a support system that will benefit the families and students of Newton County, which is a Propocity system. It is a nonprofit organization that partners with school systems across the state of Georgia as well as across the United States. Now, unfortunately, the Propocity co-founders would not, are not able to be here with us, so you have me here to make this presentation tonight. Thank you. So, have you ever thought about, or had a feeling of wanting to help some students or help family members that are in need, but you really didn't know where to go or where to get started? Here is an opportunity to help through Propocity. And Propocity will allow for us to have a quick and easy way to support the community and particularly the community members that are in need. It is a free, might I mention, a free online platform for school systems to use via an app. So, when seconds, assistance can be provided to the students in the community based on a specific need just by clicking a button. So, I want to share with you a video from Propocity that shows a little bit about what Propocity is and how it can support the community. So, that was just a quick introduction to tell you about Propocity, but I want to give you a little bit more information about it. One thing about Propocity, it is, like I said, an online free platform for any school system to use that will provide support to families that are in need. It ties directly into our strategic plan, which is goal three, culture, climate, and communities. And what it will specifically do for us in Newton County is, it will allow us to expand the support that we already have in place through the opportunity community. It will allow us to continue providing support to our students and families in the community, but with specific needs. And then it also provides us an easy way for the community members to contribute to a worthy cause. And lastly, it helps to foster the partnership with Propocity, Newton County School System, the students, and the families. So, what is Propocity? Basically, the mission of Propocity is to connect people who have a need with the people who can help with the need. And this connection is made through an app. And the app allows for that easy connection for any member of the Newton County community to help his or her neighbor. So, Propocity is an Atlanta-based organization. It was formed on the principle that mankind can find purpose through generosity. And again, as I mentioned, it is a nonprofit organization, and it is sponsored and backed by Georgia Power that builds the partnerships with the local school systems. Propocity also encourages community members to become what they call users, which are donors. And these are people who are willing to help out in time of need however they can if they have a few extra dollars that they can support a need in the community. So, our users, they will have the opportunity to have a personal experience or see the personal experience and the stories of an actual person or family in Newton County that they are really donating to. So, it's not that you're donating and supporting someone that you would not know that is across the United States, is someone in our local community. And the donors, they will know that their money is actually going to fulfill a specific need, a real need in our community. So, that will allow the receivers to have the experience of knowing people in their own community really care about their well-being and their needs. So, how does this work? Very simple. The community members, they sign up to become a user. Now, when you're signing up to become a user, you would just go to the Propocity app and sign up. You will receive as a user a weekly notification. The notification will let you know about the needs in the community. So, as a user, when I read the need, if I have any extra money that week and I decide to read the story and the story touches me and I want to support the need, then I click on that particular story and I can sponsor the need. But I don't have to as a user. If I decide that this week is not good for me, then I just either can delete that email or text response, and then I wait for the next week's notification. So, the user can read the inspiring story, decide if they want to help or not. And if they do want to help, then on that Propocity app, it will tell you a quick little story about the person that is or family that's in need and how much the need costs. So, if I decide that I want to support the need, I will, through the app, click the Meet the Needs button. Then I will enter my payment information, which is through a secure site. And this will allow me to support a specific item that is shipped directly from Amazon to the school system to one designated person. That designated person at the school, in the school system, will then ensure that we've received the item as well as the item is given to the student or the family. And all the information is private. It is confidential. It protects the identity of the student, the family, and the person who is donating. So, with the Propocity app, they use Stripe, which is the secure system to make purchases. All donations are tax deductible. And here are some of the needs. So, basically, when we determine that it's a need and we vet that need in the system, anything that can be purchased through Amazon can be purchased and sent to a family or student in need through the Propocity app. So, you have things like supplies, shoes, clothes, diapers, coats, heaters, umbrellas, undergarments. And then when you look on the right-hand side of the screen, each week, those notifications that you will receive as a user, they will come with some little story. The first one says, "New Need, New Kids, New Kicks for the New Kid." If you're interested in reading the story, you'll click on the blue link and it will give you more information about the need and it'll tell you the cost of the need. Then the second one is, "New Pants for a New Outlook." And the third, "Teen Moms Need Diapers." So, that's how you will get your weekly notification through a text message. So, once you get your weekly notification, you can see two different profiles. A system profile, which tells you how many needs are available or out here for users to respond to within that week, which in this system is seven. It also will show you how many needs have been met since the system launched the support in the district, which for this particular example is 2,236 needs have been met totally. They have 2,867 people who have signed up to say, "I am willing to receive the weekly notifications, and if my family or my budget allows me to, I can support this need." And then, again, you see right here is supported by Georgia Power. And then there's an example of a need, which is what he needs to succeed. This is a tablet for a fourth grade student. The amount is $87.11. So, if you, as a user, if you decide that you want to support that need, then you'll click on that link and it will take you to your own profile page. So, looking at this profile page, which is a separate example, this person met one need so far, and the need was only $16.50. But what the person needed was is to heat it up. Help tackle cancer for a child with this simple tool. They needed a heater. So, one of the donors spent $16.15 to buy a heater for a child who has cancer, and that was the need. So, once you accept the need, it will indicate on your app, "Met Need." Then you will go through the secure site, purchase that $16.15 heater from Amazon. It will be shipped to the school system and to that designated person in the school system, and that person will give the item to the student or family in need. So, how does, how are the needs processed? Six simple steps. First, there's a designated organizer in the system that receives the school, receives the need from the school system, basically the social worker. And the social worker determines the validity of the need because we do have to have a process in place of vetting the needs to ensure these are families and students that truly are in the position that need assistance. Then the designated organizer shares this need with Propocity. Propocity gathers all the information, they craft the story, and they share the need with the donors. So, in step four, once a week, all the users, donors, they receive that notification that indicates all of the local needs in the district, where they can read all the needs and see if they want to support any of the needs. Then step five, Propocity will use Amazon to locate the item, to purchase the item, to send the item to the school system for distribution to the family or the student in need. And then step six, the designated person in the school system, they send a thank you letter to the donor that acknowledges receipt of the item that they actually purchased to be donated to the person or family in need. And the thank you letter indicates that it was delivered to the person it was supposed to be delivered to. So, just to share with you, there are some other systems within the state of Georgia that are already participating and have partnered with Propocity. And there are also some other systems that are planning in the near future to have this type of partnership. So, as we look at how this can benefit Newton County, here may be some next steps for us with the support of the superintendent and our board. Now, we're in second semester of the school year. So, for the remaining of the school year, we would like to train people on the Propocity program. We would like to work with the Public Relations Director to share information with people in the community to get volunteers to be users and supporters of people in need in our community. We also can work with the Homeless Liaison, who will serve as the liaison between Newton County and Propocity. And then we'll work with the school social workers to identify those specific needs that we have in our system, in our community, where they will fill out a simple one-page service referral form and send that to our liaison. And the liaison works with Propocity and share the need and be able to secure the items and go through the Propocity site to have the information uploaded to share with all of the users. And lastly, to get this type of support in place for Newton County, we really would just need to talk to all of the good people that we have in the community. People who are willing to help out other neighbors in our community, neighbors that are in need. If they would just sign up to be a donor. Again, there's no obligation whatsoever. If a story touches your heart and you have some extra dollars on that week or two or three months down the line, then you can support a need in our community and we know that it stays in the community. So, we just encourage people to go to propocity.com to learn a little bit more about this great resource for our community. Or you can go to the App Store or Google Play and download the app. So, I just thank you for this opportunity to share with you what could be a wonderful resource for our families and students of Newton County.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Do we have any questions for Dr. Thomas, for any of the board members?
I've got one. It sounds amazing just off the bat, but one question I have is, I know you said, I think you said, the social worker, social worker, the person, the contact person for the school system?
Yes.
Does she have enough time? Does he have enough time? Does, I mean, that's what worries me about anything that we implement is, do they, you know, like I said, it sounds great, but do we have the staff that can take this on?
Well, first, that's the reason we were looking at just the second semester, implementing things slowly. And two, the social workers are the best people that would know about the students, the families. They talked to them already. They already know their situation, so they can vet the process. And the form is really like a paragraph that they would fill out. So, even though it may seem like something else for a social worker, it's work that they're already doing. And so, I just feel that just knowing the social workers that we have and already have worked with them, I feel that they would be willing, knowing that they're helping someone directly in the community, to take two or three minutes just to fill out, you know, that form and refer it to the liaison.
Well, like you said, I'm sure they're already doing that job. This is just a different avenue for them. But that was just my worry is that we're going to overwhelm them.
I have a question geared around the same thing, actually. So, do social workers have a separate caseload than the schools themselves? Because the social workers are district-wide employees. So, those referrals that are coming from the schools then, are those coming from the counselors or the teachers or both?
Well, we want to start slowly.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we were just going to work with referrals from the social workers.
That's already on the social worker list?
That's correct.
Okay, so that was my question.
Yes.
So, okay, okay, that answers that. So, it would be those students that have really presented a need in some form because the social worker has gotten involved, the district-wide social worker has gotten involved at this point. Okay.
And then also with Ms. Reed, Ms. Kim Reed, she is our homeless and foster care liaison. So, she works intimately with the families and the students that are in those two populations as well. So, she also can refer some of those families. But, you know, that's just another resource to be able to support, you know, provide that support.
Now, I have one more question behind that, Dr. Thomas. And you may not know the answer, and if you don't, that's fine. You can email me. But the question is, how many on the average students are there on each social worker caseload? Unless Ms. Reed knows.
I don't know about the social workers, but we certainly can get that information and let you know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Sure. Yeah. Anything that helps people in our community sounds awesome. And so, I want to be a part of that, but I have a lot of questions, so I'll ask a question.
Okay.
Have we talked to our social workers yet? Like, have we already said, "Can you handle this? Is this something you'd like to be a part of?" And what was their response?
I have informally talked to them, but we have a meeting with them on Friday to, you know, share all of the information, answer any questions that they have, and also tell them what the process is and let them know how, I don't want to say simple, but let them know that it's not another huge monumental task that they will have to take on. It's basically filling out a paragraph that says, "Sheila Thomas, and this is my need, and this is wife."
Okay. So, would they be the designated organizer?
No.
So, who is the designated organizer?
We are asking Ms. Kim Reed to be the designated organizer.
Okay.
Who is the homeless and foster care liaison.
All right, would there be, it's free. Is there extra compensation that goes along with being the designated organizer?
No, sir.
Okay. Kudos. After that system, after the designated organizer does their part and vets the need, it then goes to the Propocity team to create the story. How does that, like, what's the turnaround on that? You said it's weekly? Once a week, we're going to get a list of stories?
Right.
All right, the Propocity team, who are they? Is that just who runs the app?
Right. It's an organization that is managed through the Propocity, I guess, field people. And what they do is they take all of the needs that we share with them and then they vet it and write, I mean, just a quick little, brief little story, something that you've seen on the board, and then push that out. So, they have members within their organization to do this type of work. And again, for Propocity, they are sponsored by Georgia Power. So, those people are paid to work in the field of Propocity and support the school systems, and that's the reason we're able to have that partnership.
Okay, good. So, a follow-up question to that then was, I saw you said it's tax-deductible gifts. So, who is the 501(c)(3)? Like, who's the organization that's tax-exempt?
They are. They're a nonprofit.
Propocity is?
They're a nonprofit.
Yes.
Okay.
They are a nonprofit.
All right. Nonprofit?
501(c)(3).
Would their major contributor being Georgia Power?
Correct.
Okay.
And they have some other donors as well, but Georgia Power is the primary one.
Okay. All right, that's making sense. Is this a school system program only? Like, you're bringing it to us, I guess, to say we would like to be a part of this.
It is a school system, for us, it's a school system program only, but you could have a mom who has a need and include that in your bank of needs if you so choose. But right now, we're very focused on the needs of our students. Things like paper and pencils and calculators and things that they might, shoes, things they might not have, which there's a cap on a yearly contribution as well. So, you can't, it's $299 a year. That's the maximum. So, we're not talking about...
An individual can donate?
That a, that a student can be in need, correct.
Got you. I guess, all right, a whole list, I'm sorry. I don't want to dominate. Are there, like, it's a solution to a problem, so I like that. Have we contacted the local nonprofits that, I mean, I don't want to do crossover work. If we do a lot of, send a lot of energy, and not that every little bit doesn't help, but if someone's already specializing in this work, would it benefit us more to partner with whoever's doing this work? Then, are we creating a solution that's not needed? Or it goes back to just adding something else for people to do? Not that it's not a good solution.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you understand the tension?
I do.
I don't want to sound like I'm not supportive, but if there are other organizations that are already doing this or if we just need to be a rallying cry for these other organizations that are already doing it, let's work with the...
I think that there are organizations within Newton County schools, Newton County community that are willing to support families, students, children of need. But sometimes it's difficult for them to know who the people are that's in need. And so, this Propocity organization will allow us to bridge that gap. But yes, there are communities out here that do, you know, already support and want to support, and they can be users in this Propocity support system as well. We are just trying to make it easier for them to identify a person or family that's in need and truly provide that need immediate for the families.
And Mr. Bailey, if I may, to that last question, some of those organizations only have one to two people operating them. So, for example, I use an organization that I sit on the Board of Directors for Newton County Community Partnership. That's a two-lady operation. And so, you imagine two ladies, and in our school system alone, we have 19,700 students. You know, so I think this will open the doors up for more people, you know?
It also expands reach, so it's not just about in the community. So, like, I know people who live in Pennsylvania. And so, as soon as we launch, I'm going to send them the link. And so, now you've got people who are all over, potentially all over the world, supporting students in Newton County if they so choose. So, you're expanding your reach. You're not requiring more stress on the agencies that already exist because they are already stressed. And so, this is just a different way to meet the direct needs of students who attend our schools.
And I did look it up while you were asking your questions. So, it is, I know, Dr. Thomas, you presented on Georgia and the school districts here that have it, but they're actually all over. So, while you were asking that question, I was looking it up here. So, I pulled up like Denver, Philadelphia, so Chattanooga.
Yeah. If there's an opportunity, and I know we're thinking schools, school system-specific, so I want to understand that, but I know the county government is rolling out a rally cry for One Newton for having, you know, all of our county working together in one common goal. If there's ever an opportunity, and this feels like one, that we could partner with, with our county, not just county government, but with our entire county, all the faith-based organizations, all these people who are trying to pull in the same direction, working together to create the solution, and pardon me if I misspeak, rather than create a new solution that we have to, that we have, you know, 25 organizations trying to do the same thing, rather than let's all collectively get together, collective resources, rather than having two-man operations, you know, what if we unified and worked together and there's 25 organizations with 1,500 people and a lot more resources going towards the right solutions? I would, man, I could support that all day long, a One Newton solution. But I'm with you. Whatever we can do to help, it's good work.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any other questions, Mr. Turner?
There's a lot of needs throughout Newton County. My concern is number one, who's going to look at the veracity of the needs? Number one. And then number two, the number of needs that will be sent in. Will that be more than she can handle?
Well, the answer to your first question is, that's the reason we want to start with the social workers. Because the social workers are the main people who would know the needs, would be able to speak to the fact that this is a true valid need, and they're already working with the students and families to vet the concerns. So, we want to start off just with the social workers before we open it up to counselors or to anyone else, just to really kind of have a soft implementation. And then also with Ms. Reed, just working with her this, you know, the remainder of the school year, that will give us an opportunity to really kind of have a pilot program to see how well is the implementation going? Are there some things that we want to continue or discontinue? Or do we need some additional supports in place to maximize the efforts? Just as Mr. Bailey was saying, maybe pulling in the entire community because it may be some other resources where one person, as Ms. Baker was saying, Henderson Baker was saying, one person from another organization could also partner, and we can maximize the human time, but still using an app that will allow us to be more efficient, effective, and expedient to the services that we're providing to the students. to the services that we're providing to the students and the families here. So, I, did I answer your question? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Dr. Barr, you want to come back up?
Madam Chair, items A through C are unchanged, and the presentation you've just heard completes the superintendent's reports.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report? It's been moved by Mr. Turner, second by Ms. Coggan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. No old business, moving on to new business. So, we asked for separate information from last week for items A and B. So, I want to do A and B separately. If it pleases the board, I would like to do C through G as a slate. Is that okay?
Certainly.
As long as there are no changes, sure.
Okay, no changes on C through G?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
On item, that's correct. On item B, I do want to mention something.
Okay, A and B, we're gonna do separately.
Okay.
Okay, item A, please.
Item A is unchanged and ready for board action, Madam Chair.
Okay. Item A, do I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Turner. Okay, any discussion?
Just thank you for the information.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item B?
Item B, relative to scoreboards, just as a follow-up to Mr. Johnson's request as it relates to item B, there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow for all high school coaches that utilize sharp field and athletic directors, in which the functions and capabilities of the scoreboard and cameras will be discussed to make sure that everybody understands what will be available and to provide input as we move through the installation process. And so, that is item B.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Can I, I need a motion, Mr. Johnson first, and then we'll discuss. I need a motion to move it forward.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Turner, first and second. Okay, thank you, now discussion.
In the information, in the description, in the scope of work, it says enough parts for section one equal two pole applications, increase quantity as necessary for additional sectional poles. And the assumption that there are four cameras.
That's correct.
And the side cameras will need two poles. So, when you refer to one, does that include two poles? Or you have to say two poles, and that's for one camera running?
Right, it's for four poles, as I understand it.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yes, sir.
From this reading, how do I get to four?
Right. I don't know, but all the equipment that we've asked for is included in this. I'm not sure.
If you're installing four poles, then that's the answer to my question. But the reading don't address that in my understanding.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Barr, I do have a question. So, I know that Mr. Johnson had requested to meet with the athletic directors on last week and the coaches, and you said that meeting is tomorrow that you're gonna have.
Right, and we talked via phone with some of the folks that were available during the holiday.
Okay, so I actually thought about it, and my thought process about it was the athletic directors actually are not the ones in the booth keeping the score and doing those things. Actually, it's usually other teachers that are doing that. And so, the athletic directors most of the time are at the fence or on the field. So, they really wouldn't have any understanding of the operation of the equipment. So, is it possible, and I know you've already scheduled that meeting, but we really need to meet with the people who are gonna be using the equipment?
And in large part, we've already done that. We've had conversations with them about what we were purchasing. We did that last week as we were able to contact them. And I think, I don't remember exactly who all we talked to, but I think there was one school that we couldn't talk to anybody, but with the exception of that. But so, we're working through that process to make sure that those folks are captured in it also.
Okay, because I did speak with one person who does the operations for one of the high schools, and they brought up some very good things about it. So, like, say for instance, on here, on the contract, it talks about over 200 special effects. And so, the definition is 720 on the HD of the definition of the actual monitor. Well, the reality is nobody's gonna use 200 effects. So, was it a possibility to decrease the effects and then increase the actual definition and get the same price?
We can look at that through those conversations. But once it's approved, we'll have that amount, it'll be a fixed amount that we can spend, so. But we can certainly have those conversations.
Okay. All right, so do you guys want to move forward with this on a vote? Or do you want to wait till after the discussion? Because I know that was your consultation.
Right, I prefer to wait unless there's a, a unique situation that we can't.
Does this happen?
We've gone thus far without it, so another month will too.
Okay, Dr. Barr, is this something that we are tied in to make a decision?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so just for purposes clarity and so for understanding, we do have a motion on the floor. So, if you guys want to wait till after the meeting, you either need to table the motion that's currently on the floor, or you make a motion to commit, or you can make a motion to commit, and it can come back next month.
Is that like tabling?
Well, it's a little different. So, the table would be, you table the motion all together next month. It'll have to be removed from the table, or the motion will die. The only thing with tabling, it does not say that Dr. Barr has to meet with this committee, or a committee has to be, meeting has to be held. If you make a motion to commit, or a motion to refer to commit, then you state who he needs to commit to. So, you can refer the motion to commit to a committee composed of the athletic directors, whoever's gonna be operating the camera equipment, and to bring back the recommendations of those people.
Well, can I recall? We just want to put it off until next month.
Because there's a motion, Mr. Johnson, you gotta do it in proper order.
Well, I understand it, but I
My recommendation would somebody, would be that somebody make a motion to commit or refer to commit, that a committee meeting would be held to the people who are gonna be operating the equipment and come back with the recommendations of the people operating the committee.
If I may, Madam Chair, the simplest way to handle it, at first, a call for a vote. If it don't pass, then you do a second motion to, to come back following.
You have to do it as a whole nother motion if you do it that way.
Make another motion.
But this motion right here, yes, you can make a motion with a motion on the floor. This will substitute that motion. If this motion carries to commit, it will, you're done.
Are you guys taking notes, leadership Newton County? I would, I make a motion as you stated, as the Madam Chair stated.
It's been moved and properly second to commit the motion on the floor into next month where Dr. Barr will come back with the recommendations of the committee.
Who was the second? Did you, somebody seconded it? I didn't, just didn't hear it.
Okay, it's been moved, Mr. Johnson said it, okay. Moving properly second, all in favor?
I think.
So, basically, what we'll do is, between now and the first meeting in March, Dr. Barr will convene a meeting with the folks impacted by the new scoreboard, whether they're operational or just adding additional feedback. And then we'll bring back this very same item in the March meeting, at which point, all of the legwork will have been done, and you will be able, he'll be able to report on that, and then you can vote to approve the, the recommendation.
Right, of the committee.
Yes.
Thank you for stating that. I was gonna state it.
I'm making sure that we understand, Mike and I understand.
Not on the motion, but I want to ask them
Any opposed? You, wait, is it different from this?
I want to ask them a question pertaining to this. Am I, can I do that?
Are we already on call for the vote, Mr. Johnson? Are you asking afterwards?
I had my hand.
I'll be here, Mr. Johnson.
I'm sorry?
I'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
But I think it's something that the board, other members should know, the question.
Okay, can we do it in other matters of interest?
It's just a simple question.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
In reviewing that, would you pay particular attention to the security of the equipment?
Sure, yes, sir.
And how are we gonna secure the equipment once it's not in use?
Got it?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Items C through G, we're taking as a slate. There's no changes, changes Dr. Barr has reported? Do I have a motion for C through G?
Make a motion that we approve items C through G, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, been motioned by Mr. Turner, second by Ms. Coggan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am.
Item H?
Good evening. The superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as outlined in executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion for item H?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Other matters of interest?
I would like to take this opportunity to welcome the newest member to our district team. Following the action that our board just took, I am pleased to announce the appointment of Dr. Penny Mosley, who is here this evening, you'll just stand up, as Director of Elementary Education. Dr. Mosley holds a Bachelor of Science degree from Tennessee State University in Nashville, Tennessee, the Masters of Education degree in Educational Leadership from Georgia State University, Atlanta, Georgia. She also earned an Educational Specialist degree in Instructional Leadership from Argosy University located in Atlanta. And in 2015, Dr. Mosley earned the Educational Doctorate from Argosy University located in Atlanta. Dr. Mosley has served the students and families in the DeKalb County School System from 1999 to 2015, where she taught students in pre-K, kindergarten, first, third, and fifth grades, and she served as an Assistant Principal at Edward Bowie Traditional Theme School. Dr. Mosley has also served as an adjunct instructor at Georgia Piedmont Technical College for six years. Currently, Dr. Mosley serves the Roddale County Public School System as Principal of Hightower Trail Elementary School, where she has developed a culture of success. Dr. Mosley's experience as an elementary school principal, coupled with her expertise in curriculum and instruction, equips her to be the leader of the Newton County School System's elementary curriculum and instruction team. Her knowledge and skills will be instrumental in facilitating a culture of success and high expectations. Welcome to the team, Dr. Mosley.
Okay, any other matters of interest?
We have school tomorrow. The children will report back to school tomorrow on time and ready to learn. And I think there are 28 days until, and they, I know this because I have a 14-year-old child who lives in my house, and she counts the days to the next break. April, spring break is in April, first week of April, 28 days until then, so.
Okay, very good. All right, so I have to-do list, caseload, the number of students on the caseload, either Ms. Reed you'll take care of, or Dr. Thomas to take care of. I called you. The number, the number of students on the caseload for the social workers. And then, Dr. Barr, you have your marching orders for us as well. Okay, thank you. All right, one other matter of interest, the Newton boys are in the playoffs. Game is Thursday, Meadow Creek High School and Gwinnett. That's all the matters of interest? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? Aye, okay, meeting adjourned.